I'm going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll? Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Sue Groddick?
Here.
Magrane Shaki?
Here.
Stephen Coyle?
Here.
Andy Selvards?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Aaron Barowski?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance and then we will have opening comments by Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As many of you know Ramadan begins next week and I would like to acknowledge our many Muslim families and offer a moment of silence to wish health and happiness for all who celebrate this season. Thank you and Ramadan, Mubarakat for those of you who celebrate.
Next up, we have approval of minutes from the February 13th meeting. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second? To approve the minutes, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Magrane Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selvards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
At this time, we will have the first public session. Just a reminder, if anyone has anything to say pertaining to agenda items only at this time, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please keep your time to five minutes or less.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Service Drive. I want to speak about the hometown banners. There was a bunch of talk back and forth in the council meeting of the whole about this. And I think you guys got, in my opinion, got halfway there. I think we saw some good movement and if that's how it's voted through, I'll take that as a small victory. I saw the breakdown and then I spoke at the council meeting two weeks ago and the city was looking at recouping some of the salary or the full salary and even the benefits of the workers. Now, the residents that put these banners up, they pay their taxes, hopefully, and those taxes fund the employment of those employees. It's almost like double taxing them and I just think that's wrong. There was all kinds of talk back and forth about sewer work and water lines and everything like that and the comment was, well, we could take a $300,000 hit to the general fund and we could get through that. You're talking a couple thousand dollars here to show gratitude to the families and the veterans that are still with us. I think you guys, you got it down to $50 is what was discussed. I think you guys could and should absorb that money and make this a free thing to honor the veterans. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Not sure what's on or off the agenda, but here we go. I heard you talking about three firemen. Are we hiring new one and not replacing?
Victor Ardito, that is not on tonight's agenda.
That's not on the agenda. Okay, patching of the streets with the tarring. We own a machine, don't we?
That is, sorry. Thank you.
You spoke about that, that we own a machine. I know we did or we do yet. Is it still working and that or did it get trashed? Because you're putting out thousands, I don't know, it was 150 or so thousands of dollars for tarring cracks. Do we own the machine? Did it get destroyed or what? Now, because we have the crack fill, I've only been bringing it up for what, three, four seasons at least regarding the park? And nobody says one thing or the other. Verba's been here. He knows whether it's working or not and we get a bump on the log. And we're going to beat an old thing to death, the sign height. So if Lowe's, Menards, or anybody like that that has a nice sign where people could see from the street
Signs are-
that they were being built now?
That is, Ardito.
We wouldn't be allowed to have them.
Signs are-
And I'm going with Kathy Pucci about being able to talk about what we're talking about. So I'll come back maybe.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else for agenda items at this time? We will now move forward with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will start this evening with the school board liaison, Councilwoman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, my report is a quick one because the next school board meeting will take place March 21st. So I will give a more thorough one at the next city council. But I did want to reiterate that this, March 15th, this Wednesday, there will be a kindergarten information night at 6:00 PM in the Fieldhouse. And at the last work session this past Tuesday, the school board met with a recruiter from the OSBA to help develop a plan to hire a replacement treasurer for the school district, which will help outline what credentials and experiences needed. I'd like to thank Mr. Signer for reaching out to me with that information. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the planning commission report, Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. Planning Commission met on March, yes, March 1st. All of a sudden, I couldn't think if it was March. To consider two related requests from Matisse's Design Service. The first request was approved contingent on the execution of the Declaration of Concerning the Drive-Thru, Encroachment and Setback Agreement for a preliminary site plan approval for a drive-through expansion and 140-foot square foot building addition for Duncan/Baskin Robbins at 4740 Ridge Road. And the second request was for a sign package for Duncan/Baskin Robbins. And that was passed. That was approved. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the domestic abuse commission. The Brooklyn Domestic Abuse Commission will be meeting at Panera on Thursday, March 23rd at 6 o'clock. We will be planning a small event for April to bring awareness to Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, which is recognized nationally every April. Next up, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilwoman Groddick.
The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on March 16th at 6:00 PM to consider a request from Fast Signs and Jealousy Auto Detailing for a variance for three additional signs to the allowable one for the building face for signage for jealousy auto design detailing at 7323 Clinton Road. This was deferred from their February meeting. And that concludes that report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Recreation Board, Councilwoman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn's Easter egg hunt will be held on Saturday, April 1st. Registration is required. Check in at our senior center at 10:30 AM. Hunt begins at 11:00 AM at Veterans Memorial Park in Safety Town. Ages zero through 10, there will be a raffle, baskets, and pictures with the Easter bunny available. Register at www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn baseball and softball registration has begun and will run through March 31st. T-ball, ages three and four. Rookie coach pitch, ages five to six. Register at www.jumpstartssports.com. 8U coach pitch baseball and softball, ages six to eight, as of May 1st. Residents $55, non-residents $65. Practices begin in May and games begin in June. Teams will travel to North Homestead, Fairview Park for games. 10U, 12U, 14U baseball leagues, 10U, 12U, 15U softball leagues, ages eight through 15, as of August 1st. Registration has begun and will run through March 31st, 2023. Residents $70, non-residents $80. Practices begin in May and games begin in June. Teams will travel to Strongsville Brook Park, North Homestead, Homestead Falls, Middleburg, and Fairview Park for games. For more information, again, www.brooklynrec.com. The next recreation board meeting will be held on March 20th. Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Public Safety and Environmental Committee, Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. The committee met at 5:30 this evening to discuss ordinance 2023-7, establishing a pilot program for the keeping of hens in Brooklyn. The committee heard discussion on this new ordinance. I would like to thank the chief and the animal control officer for their attendance and insight on the ordinance. And I would also like to thank residents who spoke regarding the ordinance. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And finally, this evening, we do have a committee of the whole report. The committee of the whole met at 6:15 today. We did have one guest speaker, our engineer, Mike Henry. He talked about establishing a water replacement program. This came up to the attention of administration because of the need to replace water lines on Southwood, which was on our street list to be repaved this year. The total cost to replace the line and repave the road would be about three times what we budgeted. We will be removing Southwood from our street program this year so that we can continue to talk and look at creating some type of a street, or sorry, water line replacement program to help pay for this and any other future water line repairs that do need to, that do come up in the future. Our infrastructure is aging, so it's been nice we haven't needed this, but it's also good to plan for the future as well. And then we did also talk about the ordinances on tonight's agenda. So ordinance 2022-32 regarding the apartment lighting and security was recommended by the committee of the whole to approve tonight. Ordinance 2023-6 is the military banner program. This was amended to reflect a $50 fee. We did have discussion on this. The complete materials, the fabric is $32. The ink is $24 for the actual cost of the banner, which would have been $56. And we decided that even 50 would be a reasonable one-time fee for people who want to get a banner to recognize their family members. There was also the brackets that were in that cost of $105 and tape and $1.60. So the total cost of the banners was $162.60. This was originally a housekeeping item that came up because it was not officially in our fee schedule. But council did amend this to reflect the $50 fee and recommended to approve tonight because we are already accepting applications for the program this year. And that concludes my report. Now, we will have reports of council. We begin this evening with Councilwoman Tansky.
The only thing I have was Mayor Ron Van Kirk got back to me on the on-ramps of being paved because they are in pretty much bad shape and getting worse. But when he got back to me, they're telling me they're not going to be done until 2027.
Ridgeline.
Ridgeline.
Tideman's being done next year.
Yeah. Ridgeline. Which Ridgeline, I think, is worse than Tideman. But alls I know is all the on-ramps going south towards Medina were already done. So Ron, you sent another letter that it's unacceptable that we should have to wait four more years and ride those ramps and bust up our cars. That's ridiculous. So if you could send another letter out, I figured they were going to come back for one or two years. I did not figure it was going to go four more years. And then it's going to be a delay, so we're probably though 2030 is what they're going to probably have to do. So I appreciate that.
I may be recognized.
Yes.
I did send the follow-up to John.
You did?
Yeah. And so he's going to get, he's out right now, but he'll get back to me. He's been very good to get back to me. So we'll have further discussion on it. I would agree with you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Groddick.
Just very briefly, I would like to thank Mayor Van Kirk and Chief Paul for moving ahead to begin a weather radio alert pilot program. During committee of the whole, Mayor Van Kirk gave an update and he hopes to purchase up to 30 radios and have them in place in time for Ohio's Severe Weather Awareness Week, which is, I now know, thanks to the mayor, March 20th through the 26th. So thank you very much for listening to our ideas, listening to the residents, and moving so quickly on this. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Coyle.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to, I too wanted to echo the same. Very happy to hear about the weather alert radios. I think it's a great program that we're coming up with. So to kind of go along with my report here, at the last meeting, the topic of Ready, Notify came up with tornado season rapidly approaching. I think it's definitely worth mentioning again. This info comes directly from the county's website, which is readynotify.us. Ready Notify is Cuyahoga County's mass alert notification system. Participation in the program is voluntary. All that is required to sign up is valid email, your home address, and phone number. Once signed up, you'll receive a text message and/or phone call notifications about emergency events, water boil alerts, and other safety messages. For anybody requiring help signing up, please reach out as I'd be happy to assist. Lastly, for businesses in Brooklyn, the Cuyahoga County Department of Consumer Affairs and Sustainability, with support from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, is inviting retailers to apply for a sustainable stores grant. The grant was developed to help local retail stores be more environmentally sustainable and comply with the disposable bag ban in Cuyahoga County. Grants are up to $5,000. They're available to help support retailers' efforts to eliminate plastic checkout bags from operations, educate consumers and retailers about the county's disposable bag ordinance, and establish a consumer culture of reusable woven bag used for all shopping trips in Cuyahoga County. The deadline to apply is approaching. Applications must be submitted by 4:00 PM on the 15th. For more info, visit the county's sustainability page or reach out to the plastic bag ban officer, which is Catherine Storinsky. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Selchers.
Thank you. Good evening. Brooklyn Doraemon Club and Music Department will be performing musical Sister Act for the annual production this year. There's a special production presentation for Brooklyn seniors on March 23rd at 10:00 AM. Coffee and donuts will be served. Please RSVP by calling 216-485-8112. The full production will be shown on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, March 23rd, 24th, and 25th at 7:00 PM. There'll also be a Saturday afternoon matinee. Now, it's time for some milk and cookies for storytime for the next chapter of First Energy and the LED streetlight conversion. Last meeting, I mentioned, they started, that's two weeks ago, on Monday morning on Brookwood off a bit off. They went on to Glencoe, they worked a little bit on Ira, and it just sounded so good. But in following the truck around, found out that First Energy was putting up a different wattage that was designed by Real Term, so work stopped. We had a number of emails and a teleconference that eventually revealed that First Energy did not scroll far enough right on the Excel design sheet created by Real Term. Can't make this stuff up. Wait time for the correct wattages for the fixtures is about 40 days. The new game plan was to go to the main streets, which still need to be done, and work on those in addition to finishing up train more west of Ridge and a wood lamp on Ira. Driving around this morning, I found a truck over on Glencoe east of Ridge where they started putting up 50 wide LED fixtures again. That stopped. They did manage to finish the five on the west side of Ridge. So it's just a comedy of errors the whole time through. So that's it for storytime for today. The Laurel Garden Club, along with the Friends of the Brooklyn Library and Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, will be having two events over at the library this year in April and May. The first one is April 19th. It's color through season, choosing the right shrubs and companion plants. And on May 17th at 7:00 PM, also at the library, there will be a program, it's native plants, rugged, easy care survivors. You can sign up for both of these events. One has 60 seats available space, one has 75. We've got roughly 30, 35 people already signed up for each of these events. Registration is open through the county library website. If you have issues, please get ahold of me. And the cleanup dates for Keep Brooklyn Beautiful are on the volunteer.kab.org website. Look for Brooklyn, you'll find us. There are a number of events that are listed. They're good for community service hours. There should be also another community service date that is at work with the schools. The dates will be in May, but the actual date and time has yet to be determined. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the updates that you've been providing us the Friday before the council meetings. I find them very helpful. For quite a time, we received the minutes of the staff meetings, but then those stopped. So I find these very helpful. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Just to let everybody know that there is a primary election on Tuesday, May 2nd. And for Brooklyn, we'll have the candidate for Parma Muni Court on the ballot and also our zoning issues, which are issues seven through 14. I have some dates pertinent to the election. Close of registration for anyone who needs to either register or change their address is April 3rd. Opening of early in-person and vote-by-mail voting is, will begin on April 4th. The deadline for applications by mail for vote-by-mail, or excuse me, is April 25th. Voting in person at the Board of Elections ends on April 30th. And on Monday, April, I'm sorry, May 1st, all vote-by-mail ballots mailed anywhere in the US must be postmarked on or before this date and received at the Board of Elections on or before May 6th. There are some very important changes this year to the elections. This was through House Bill 458. The biggest thing for those who are voting by mail is you now have to send a copy of the front and back of your ID. So you can use your driver's license, a state ID, use the last four digits of your social security number, but they do need a copy of the ID that you're using. So for example, if you're using a driver's license or a state ID, you have to copy the front and the back to send it in. So that's going to be a really big change for people. Some other changes are the deadline to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot has been changed. It used to be that you could, you had until 12 noon on Saturday, the weekend before the election, to apply for an absentee ballot. Now, in reality, that really was not enough time to, for them to get the ballot to you, especially with the way the mail is now, and then for you to get it back in time. But now it's the seventh day before the election, which is the Tuesday before. There's also a change to the timeframe that vote-by-mail ballots have to be received by the Board of Elections. It used to be that as long as it was postmarked the day before the election, that there was a 10-day period that it could be received. And now that's cut down to the fourth day after the election. A change in the early in-person voting at the Board of Elections. They will no longer have that option available on the day before the election, that Monday. Identification at the polls, there are some changes. You have to have either an Ohio driver's license, an Ohio state ID, the interim document that they provide to you at the BMV when you've applied for your license, because now they mail it to you. That is sufficient. And you can now use your US passport or a passport card, which was not permissible before. And then you can also use a military ID, Ohio National Guard ID, or US Department of Veterans ID, as long as those include the voter's name and a photograph. So some key changes is people will no longer be able to provide for their ID a current utility bill, bank statement, paycheck, or another government document. Those will no longer be eligible for ID. So I think the biggest change for most people is going to be that you now have to produce and copy your ID for vote-by-mail. Mr. Ardito, just to clarify for you, the money that we're receiving from the county for the road maintenance, that is for the materials that we use for crack sealing. So yes, we still do it ourselves in-house, but we're eligible, once we've completed it, that we can get a reimbursement up to the amount that they've awarded us for the materials. And I know you mentioned crack sealing in the park, but weather-wise, that's not something we can do right now. But hopefully, I know it's been a while, but hopefully, I think the mayor passed that along to Mr. Verba at the meeting, I think it was two meetings ago that you brought that up. And Mayor, I do think it's time for the directors and chiefs to come back to our council meetings. I mean, it's understood that that's part of their job. And I know during COVID, we relaxed that because we were literally setting up tables down below to physically distance. And I know that they were only coming to our meetings when they had something on the agenda. But I do think it's time that they come back to our council meetings. So I hope you'll give that some serious consideration. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Barowski.
Thank you. At the last couple of meetings, I have spoken on the matter of the theft of catalytic converters. A bipartisan group in the US House and the US Senate recently introduced a bill to stop thieves who target converters in vehicles such as work trucks and personal vehicles. The bill would require each converter to be stamped with a VIN number so police and scrap dealers would know whether or not that they are dealing with stolen property. The bill would also make it a federal crime to steal, sell, or traffic the stolen converters. And it would also provide federal grants for dealers and repair shops to stamp the VIN numbers on the converters when existing vehicles are in for work. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. I do just have one thing to add from my report. March is the first month in nearly three years that SNAP benefits, benefits for low-income households to help purchase food are being reduced to the pre-pandemic levels here in Ohio. Nationally, this amounted to an average of $100 extra a month for households. I don't know about you, but that's about an entire week of groceries in my household. We're only a family of two. Research shows that the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as SNAP, is the nation's, which is the nation's most important anti-hunger program, is associated with lower healthcare costs and improved health outcomes. One in eight households, or about 13% in Ohio, rely on SNAP to make food purchases. At a time when grocery costs remain inflated, food banks around Ohio are preparing for more need as this pandemic benefit is ending. The Greater Cleveland Food Bank Help Center number is 216-738-2067, where callers can receive budgeting help or find out about assistance programs near them. If you need extra assistance putting food on the table, please call today. Additionally, if you would like to help, to give help by volunteering for the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, you can call them at 216-738-7240 or visit their website at greaterclevelandfoodbank.org. I volunteered just last week, Monday, with a friend where we went after work hours and helped assemble shelf-stable boxes, which were given away the next day in Euclid. They have done work, they have work for volunteers. So if you have the time, this is a great organization and a great time to donate your time to. That ends my report. Next up, we have Mayor Van Kirk.
Thank you, Council President. The bids for the right turn lane for Memphis to Tideman came back to the city. We had two bids for this project. CA Agresta was the lowest and best bid. The construction price actually came back under budget at $610,000, or underestimates, I should say, at $610,000. That project will begin sometime in May or June. It will be completed, should be completed by the end of September. As was mentioned, Southwood Avenue is currently on this, was currently on the city's repair list for this year. We had budgeted $390,000 for that. But we do, we will need to replace the water lines on that street when we do the repair. To do all of it together this year would be $1,275,000, which is well above what our budget was for this year. And we do not have a funding source presently for a water line replacement system. We walked through a process in the, in the committee of the whole meeting to fund it for next year. But we are going to remove Southwood from this year's repairs because it did come in so over budget. Our local streets program, the rest of them, Memorial Plaza relocation project, were advertised this past week and the opening for those bids will take place on the 24th with the expectation to start in the spring. I want to welcome two new hires to the city of Brooklyn, law enforcement clerks. I want to welcome two new hires to the city of Brooklyn, law enforcement clerks Adam Griffith and Erica Cluth. They will start on March 13th and March 27th respectfully. Kathy Misery, who is currently working as our senior center coordinator, has accepted a position in Bay Village as their community director. Her last day in the city of Brooklyn will be March 23rd. We do have a plan in place to cover her responsibilities temporarily, but are currently working on a more permanent solution. Kathy is a fantastic employee. She was one of the first coordinators that I met with when I became the mayor, and she'll be greatly missed, and I wish her the best of luck in Bay Village. Chief Paul has interviewed a number of candidates for the three positions within the fire department, so we should be seeing some movement on the hiring of those firefighters very shortly. We also received notice, as was already mentioned, we will be receiving up to $98,640 from the County Road Preventative Maintenance Reimbursement Program to the crack sealing on Memphis and Tiedemann. As Mrs. Pucci mentioned, this is for the materials. We will do this work in-house, and then we will pay for it, and then we will seek reimbursement from the county for those repairs. And of course, crack sealing is very important, as was already mentioned. Yes, Mr. Ardito, I did speak with Mr. Verba about the park a couple of weeks ago. Also, we received notice that the Public Utilities Commission has renewed Notpack's electric certificate for a two-year period. You should have received information from Notpack that they were no longer supplying that service. It is now going to be started again, and so they'll be re-enrolling customers later on this spring. The new signs for the I-40, I-480 off-ramps, the brick is in, and so those signs should be being installed here beginning this week. You should probably notice that the service department cut down a number of the old scrub pine trees that were on those off-ramps, as well as the brick that's actually sitting out there right now. And so we'll be doing some landscaping and installing those signs here in coming weeks. First Energy is moving forward with their LED conversion, as Mr. Selhertz already talked about. A landscape architect, Benke, is continuing their work on the master plan for Memorial Park. This was part of the strategic plan that came out for the city in 2020 to enhance the parks. They've broken the plan down into three phases, and once they have their preliminary plan completed, they will then come to council to present that. And I am aiming for sometime in April, a first meeting in April, if that's possible, them to have that done. As Mrs. Grodek mentioned, and Mr. Coyle mentioned, Chief Paul and I put together a small pilot program for the NOAA weather radios. The city will be purchasing these radios. They'll be housed down at the fire department, and residents can go to the fire department, show proof of residency. There is a limit of one radio per residential Brooklyn address. We're trying to make these available for those who do not have smartphone or similar technology, so that would be, that's also appreciated. They'll be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. This initial round will include 30 radios. Also, the fire department, just like the smoke detectors, they'll assist residents in setting them up if need be, and backup batteries will be available upon request as well. The city center project completion date is still set for May 5th. We've received notification from Panzika, who is the construction contractor, that the electric parts are still set to be on-site next week as scheduled, and if those do come in, the completion date is still set for May 5th. Last week, I had my first coffee with the mayor. At the senior center, there were over 40 residents. They came out and asked questions and got to meet a lot of wonderful people, and so we will keep the residents apprised of the future dates for those. In regards to the military banners, thank you, Mr. Raguz, for putting together the cost of all of that, for that. The original cost that we're being charged was $130. This ordinance is just real resolution, is a housing, is an ordinance, is a housekeeping item. This plan has been running since 2020, I believe, but was never on our fee schedule. And so I am fully on board with changing it to whatever council desires to do, $50 is what they decided to put it on for tonight, but that's why this ordinance is on there. The spring newsletter should have hit your mailboxes earlier next week, or earlier last week. If you have not received one, please contact City Hall. We have extra copies. We'll make sure that we get those to you. Answer your question, Mr. Tansky, in regards to the on-ramps. The Tiedemann Road resurfacing on-ramps are set for 2024. As you mentioned, Ridge Road is set for 2027. But John also mentioned to me that they did patch it last Thursday, which would have been like, this was from two meetings ago, so sometime in the first week of March. But also, they said they'll keep doing that until the spring, and then they'll do more permanent repairs to hold them together until 2027. So they're not done with what they're doing. They're just going to wait until the spring, do some more work. But the major oval hall will not take place till 2027.
Our crew is calling up the ramps?
What's that?
Our crew?
No, no. This is the, I'm sorry, John from the Department of Transportation, oh God, is taking care of that. That's their responsibility. And he's been very receptive to me, and so I will reach out to him again.
Let him know we pay taxes here. It's a state.
Very good. All right. And then they are also looking at doing some additional work as well by expanding that in 2027. All right. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have directors' reports. I believe we have one. No. Never mind. We do not have any directors' reports.
Manager.
Yes.
Excuse me. And President. We are, just a quick ad hoc directors' report, we are meeting as a charter review commission tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
6:00.
In the conference room.
Thank you, Director Butler. Next, we do have, I'm sorry, a notification that 2023 County Road Preventative Maintenance Reimbursement Program, we were awarded two projects for crack sealing for Memphis and Tiedemann Roads, $33,480 for Memphis from West Cork Line to Ridge, and $65,160 for Tiedemann for South Cork Line to Memphis. Under old business tonight, we have ordinance 2022-32. This is up for a third reading and adoption tonight, enacting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the Cautified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn. And once again, we've talked about this a lot, but this brings lighting and security camera regulations to apartment complexes in Brooklyn.
Move to adopt as amended?
To adopt as amended. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodek?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
No.
Ordinance 2023-6 is on second reading tonight, but looking to pass by emergency to establish the fee for the Brooklyn Hometown Military Banner Program.
Move to amend Section 1 to strike $130 and insert $50.
Second. To amend. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodek?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules as amended?
Second.
To suspend the rules. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodek?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
And finally, on our new business, we have ordinance 2023-7, which is on second reading tonight. I know Board decks originally said first, but it is on second reading tonight, establishing a pilot program for the keeping of hens in Brooklyn and declaring an emergency. And we do not have any new business tonight, so we will move on with the second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
I actually had a couple of questions. Couple of them were answered tonight. First off, I'd like to know, is to be confirmed that there's a service garage worker that's in the New City Town Center project, and he's actually installing different items and working on different projects in there? It's a project that's costing north of $27.1 million. I am puzzled that it would not be turnkey move-in ready for the amount of money that the city's going to be paying for that. So I'd like to know if that's true and why. There was talk about these service garage workers cutting the trees down on the off-ramps. Did the city make some kind of a deal with the state of Ohio about the service garage workers cutting the grass on those ramps? And I'd like to know why they did that. There's been complaints that with the weather and different items, that we already have enough with the vacant houses and the people that ignore and don't cut their grass, that they can't even keep up with that. And why we would add something with the state just doesn't make sense. I don't believe we have the proper equipment and the mowers to cut those grades and those ramps. I don't think it could be done safely, so I think that's problems. One of the things I was going to hit on, but Councilwoman Pucci brought it up, I think that the department head should be here to answer questions. There's a couple of questions that have already been asked that directors could have answered. And then lastly, Mayor Van Kirk, I asked you this probably two meetings ago, have you made any decisions about hiring a safety director? The problem I have with it is you have no experience with police or fire, and that's what it deals with. And if someone were to get in trouble and have some sort of disciplinary action, you're taking a step away from them, and I think it kind of violates their due process if there was a safety director. We actually have a gentleman here that was the safety director for a period of time, and it adds a layer of the whole grievance process and the disciplinary process, and I think that's very much needed.
Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. The firemen, I don't pay that close attention, but are you hiring three new firemen or replacing firemen that have retired or left? Sign height, again, eight foot to me is ridiculous. I know about everybody here, myself has driven by somewhere with all these new signs. There's a car next to you, you drive right by it. Brought up by the electrical in the park also, has that been looked into before those tubes fall off the bridge and cause a major problem? About it for now. I'll work on more for next time.
Thank you, Mr. Ardito.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
To answer the questions, as far as the building goes, what we're putting in are brackets that, it's for aesthetic purposes only, that line up the glass panels. It was not part of the original budget for the city center project. We did spec it out for a pricing from Panzika, and it cost over $8,000 to put in clips. We were able to find clips that will fit inside of there, and the entire expense of that will be under $1,000. So that is why we did that. And so, yes, the service department will be installing those. I've already contacted Mr. Verba. We've already been out there with one of the laborers that has agreed to do it, and so it will save the city a lot of money, and also will make sure that those things look finished when they're completed. The ramps, for the off-ramps, yes, the city will be cutting that grass for that. That was part of the process when we worked with the state on doing the grading, or excuse me, doing the landscaping, the signs in there. As far as the safety of that goes, I will speak with Mr. Verba about that, but there hasn't been any issues that I'm aware of that were brought up. As far as safety director, I will tell you the same thing I told you before when that question was asked. I am considering it. I spoke with both chiefs about it a couple of times, and we will see where that leads in the future. To answer your question about the new firefighters, yes, these are three new firefighters. They're not replacing anyone. There are three additional firefighters that council did approve last year as part of the budget process. And I believe that answers all the questions at rest.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Mayor, what type of brackets are these?
So, yeah, so, inside the city hall, you've been through there, right?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, going up the main staircase, there's glass panels.
Right.
And there's gaps between them, and then along the whole top, the same panels, they're safety panels.
Right.
But it's very expensive to put topping on that, and so we did not do that. So the panels don't always line up evenly. They're a little bit skewed. I didn't, we didn't like how it looked. And so we contacted Panzika about how to fix it. Well, they specked it out with the company that put those panels in. It's over $8,000 to put in these brackets. And so we worked with Bowen, who is our architect, to find brackets that were less expensive that we can install ourselves, and literally it's two Allen red screws to put them in.
Okay.
It's very, very simple.
Okay.
And it costs under $1,000 to put them in.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Does the mayor, directors, or anybody in council have anything to add?
May I be recognized? I neglected to say when the next planning commission meeting is. April sounds so far away as I'm watching the snowfall and wondering if I have a snow rush. But our next meeting will be April 5th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just want to thank Kathy Misery for everything she's done for our city. She's really done such a terrific job. She started out with us as a receptionist and then moved over to the senior center, and then when our senior coordinator retired, she took on those additional responsibilities and ran everything over there. And she is, was so dedicated to our seniors and our community. This is a big loss for Brooklyn, but I'm very excited for her that she has this nice opportunity to move up in Bay Village. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Two additional things. One, we do have, there is a, the Cleveland Building and Construction Trades is putting on an apprentice career fair that will take place on March 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And there's been a lot of interest in the trades recently, and this is a great way to be familiar, become familiar with bricklaying, carpentry, electrical work, so on and so forth. So it'll take place on March 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And there was one other thing that Mr. Ardito mentioned, that was the piping down in the park. I believe that those straps have been repaired. I was told that they were. So I can double-check on that tomorrow, but I did email Mr. Verba the next day, and I believe it's been taken care of, but I'll double-check tomorrow.
Anybody else? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.